What's going on Breath family? This is the Breathful Podcast and we're tuning in with a special guest, Cultivate Elevate. Thank you all for joining in around this time. This is the first podcast we're broadcasting like this. So it's a little bit last minute, but here we go.
What's going on? What's happening?
Greetings brother, welcome.
A little crazy.
How's your day going so far?
A little crazy, always I feel like it's always like that sometimes, but now everything's calm. Just some website stuff, we were having some website issues or whatever.
Great to have you on, if you want to introduce yourself. My name is The Black Airbender Devon, AKA The Black Airbender. And this is the Breathful Podcast, it's the first time we're hosting it in this manner. So yeah.
My name's Matt, I run Cultivate Elevate. And at Cultivate Elevate, we create superfood products to help heal the body at the cellular level. Because our foods and all of these toxins that are placed into our food supply. We need something to revitalize the body and bring back nutrients. And that's why we created our company. We wanted to bring superfoods of all different types and all different types of knowledge forward as a company to help heal, right? Because that's the biggest thing that we're facing right now.
Yeah, brother. Yeah, you're big on electroculture, you're big on doing things in a more holistic way. Yeah, everything that I support, everything that is within our same alignment in terms of our mission and sharing this type of information with the rest of humanity. And it's been left in the dark for so long and suppressed in so many different ways. And it's an honor to actually have you on again. And yeah, do you have any questions for me before we start?
Brother, you're up. Um, I guess the question is, how'd you get into breathitarianism? Because I remember you were, you're heavy into it. I saw your YouTube video that went crazy, I think it got like a million views. And you were heavily into breathitarianism. So how'd you get into it and why? And yeah, I guess that would be a first part.
Yeah, so I lost everything to a business partner years ago. And that downward spiral forced me to acknowledge the cause of my ignorance. And at the time, I met my sifu at the time, my mentor, if you will. And I told him everything that happened, everything I lost, literally homeless at that point in time. And he took me under his wing and taught me the power of breath, literally. And that was the starting point of alchemy breathwork, mixing everything I learned from Bingu with Nassau scholars that I've been blessed to just be in the room with, like people, not the NASA, the mainstream knows, but people, yeah, people behind that, you know, and picking their brains and stuff of that nature and learning what this world really is. And meshing all of that, if you want to call it scientific, all that knowledge into what I call alchemy breathwork in terms of utilizing breathwork in everyday life beyond the sit down session.
That makes, makes perfect sense. I've been starting a lot of breathwork myself and I've noticed my energy better, mental clarity is better. I've noticed, you know, like just focus, way better focus. And I can hold my breath, I think for like three or four minutes. So it's definitely a drastic improvement in that spectrum as well too. Versus on average, I feel like without breathwork, it's like shallow breathing. You know, you kind of like, you know, like kind of like shallow breathing and you can't really breathe that well. And I feel like that's a lot of stress and anxiety and not getting enough oxygen, right? To our blood and to our brain. So then everything gets kind of tense and pented up. But with breathwork, I notice I do about forty five minutes to an hour and it's just remarkable. I mean, it's almost like a trip, you know, it's almost kind of like a small, it's kind of like a mushroom small trip. You know, where you can start to almost see different things and really get through connected into your thoughts. I'm sure you feel the same way with it.
Yeah, for sure. Everything around us is, nothing is truly stagnant, right? Everything is moving at a molecular level. There's a, there's a contrast there and that's what breath helps us, reminds, reminds us and keeps that in that flow of that unified field. And that's, that's the power of breath and the aspect of how I view scaler. I literally view scaler and breath to me in itself is a scaler connection.
I can totally see that. And that's where it even leads into, if we take the scalar and the talaric fields, you can take that even into electroculture as well too. And enhancing yields using the frequencies and all the energy that's around us 24/7/365. And it's been crazy, I've gotten so many videos, I've probably got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of videos of people's gardens just exploding because of using the energy around us and just putting a little bit of copper, as you have copper on the head as well too, but a little bit of copper right into their soil. And it starts harnessing all that chi, prana, life force, vital force, whichever, whatever word you like to call it, there's a lot of them. But it starts to harness all that energy and you see these plants just explode, you know? And we can easily fix, in my opinion, a lot of food shortages, which are all fabricated. But a lot of food shortages overnight with just using electroculture. Because don't, you know, you don't need pesticides, you don't need fertilizers. You know, you just need the energy that's around us. And even with, like you said, with the breathwork, you can heal the body just naturally, you know, just with the breath. Because that's what they used to do back in the day. They didn't, you know, they didn't have anything fancy, they were just breathing. And they would focus and inhale and exhale. And then you would get people grouped together, right? Like as, and they would dance and they can breathe and create energy and vibrancy together. And that's where like all like, you know, the Hawaiian dances and Polynesian dances and a lot of that stuff with fire as well as breath, you can combine those two elements of wind and, wind and fire together to create even more energy. So it's fascinating that it's, a lot of this, like you said, has been suppressed and has been not put out there. But it's, I'm glad to see that yourself and as well as myself, putting all these things out there to help raise the frequency and, you know, elevate people's potential. Because obviously we've been disconnected from that because we live, in my opinion, like all the people in front of me right now on Scottsdale Road, driving up and down in stress, right? You know, there's a lot of stress, you're, you're tugging that car and you're in a lot of stress and you're not breathing, you're not functioning, you're not, you know, in tune to anything. And we become more and more like in a box than actually being connected to all of this beautiful nature that's around us and all these plants and everything that's there.
Yeah, brother. Yeah, so what got you into electroculture?
I was, so I went into George Lakovsky first and George Lakovsky's multi-wave oscillator. And I went down this whole rabbit hole of two books by George Lakovsky and learning about the multi-wave oscillator and how he was using frequencies to heal people in a short amount of time. It was about, I think he said fifteen minutes at a very high frequency. And during that time, when I was starting to understand that, he was big into copper. And I was understanding some stuff with copper and really getting into it. And I'm like, this is, this is really fascinating how he created, you know, it's like twelve rings. And one is brass, one is gold, one is silver, one is platinum. And it's all the elements and that's how he created his multi-wave oscillator. So that's why we can't really replicate it the same as he did back then, because they had access to different metals back then. They are much more, much more expensive nowadays.
Way more.
So it's like a different, different thing. But with George Lakovsky, he created that. And in that too, he talked about the Lakovsky coil. And so I started experimenting with putting copper, you know, just on my hands, putting on my, on my wrists. I started putting on my ankles, I started putting on my neck. And when I used to do my meditations and chanting, because I would do a lot of meditations and chanting, I would take copper and put like a copper cup or a copper bowl, like kind of behind my head, kind of like that. And I noticed that the frequency of the sound, like when I just put my hands here, just like that, it's like earmuffs. And I noticed that it was really loud and very entrancing, you know? So I was like, okay, this is interesting. And then when he was talking about the Lakovsky coil on the plants and how they were taking cancer off the plants or disease off the plants, I was like, okay, that's interesting. And then I started learning into Victor Schauberger and all of his work with the golden plow and the bio plow and how he used brass specifically for his plow, so that it would cut perfectly through, through the soil. Because iron diminishes the magnetic frequency of the soil. So brass does not impact the magnetic frequency. So I'm like, hmm. So then I thought, I'm going to take all of this in which I'm learning. And then I also learned about Justin Christo Flow and read his book on electroculture and all of this. And just kept digging into different people, right? Because it's like, once you find one person, you start seeing everybody else. And then all of a sudden, it's a whole, it's exactly, it's a whole circle. And then you got to read that book, that book, that book, that book, and then, you know, get all those. So as I started doing that, I started connecting the dots and going, let's just try this. So I put my plants out on the balcony with some copper coils with wood, super simple, nothing crazy. And just made some spirals or vortexes. And I started to notice too, with everywhere that I would do this, including in my, my plants, but also out in the, in the desert, I would draw vortexes. And I noticed that when I would draw vortexes and chant at the same time, the sound frequency would change depending on what was drawn into the ground. So each sound, each symbol resonated at different frequencies. But I noticed that pyramids specifically always resonated at a very powerful frequency. Circles and squares are all different, lines are all different and everything else. But specifically pyramids and as well vortexes. So what I started to notice was, was when I would do all of this out in the desert and just being drawing and making sounds and chanting and whatever, all of a sudden, all these bees would start coming, all these insects would start coming, every, everything like would start literally hanging out like within the next like twenty minutes. And I'm like, okay, it's interesting because they're only hanging out in this spiral or in this design. They don't go to anything else, the birds don't go anywhere else. And what I noticed was the plants then in that same area, because I was getting into like Orgone and Organite and Wilhelm Reich and all his work as well too. But what I noticed was, was in those areas, those plants were the only, so they have the mesquite plant, which I think they have it in Florida by U2 as well. But the mesquite plant is like this, like it looks like a caterpillar and it's got a bunch of seeds in there. And all, all, so disgusting. But anyway, so when I noticed in that area, those plants, they were the only mesquite plants that actually turned red. And that's what the mosquito is supposed to do. It goes from green to yellow to red. But due to whatever's going on with the frequency around us and whatever else, they don't always ripen. Even though they have water, they don't ripen and I don't know why that happens. But it could be a frequency energy thing. But I noticed that all of the mesquite trees next to all the area in which I've been doing all my stuff and I put some rods and did some different vortexes and whatever else, all of them turn red. And so I was collecting them and bringing them home like by the pound. Because I was like, you know, these are the best tasting things, they keep you, you know, hydrated, they're great for your blood sugar, everything else. But that's where I started experimenting over there. So then I was like, okay, now I'm going to try it on my, on my plants, on my balcony, on my moringa and try it with those. And when I started putting the copper rod, or I'm sorry, the wooden rods with the copper antennas, just simple setup like two bucks. When I started putting those in there, I started noticing my moringa plant was just like exploding. And my moringa plant now is, the tree itself is probably twelve, ten to twelve feet tall and the pot is only two feet tall. So it's, it's pretty much, I mean, it probably has engulfed all of the dirt of the pot. But it was fascinating because the seeds, when I grew the actual moringa pods on the plant and it started sprouting them, it sprouted multiple moringa pods at the same time. And not only on top of that, the moringa pods were twenty two inches long compared to the traditional six to eight inches. So it, it put proof to the electroculture works, right? And because when I was putting up a lot of these videos on TikTok and Instagram and everything else, a lot of people wanted to see applications, but they didn't, a lot of people didn't believe that it can actually do that. Because there's no, nobody actually replicating it. Because a lot of people said, well, if it was so easy, why isn't anybody doing it? And I go, because it's been suppressed, you know, all of this has been suppressed from us. And so when I started seeing this, I started noticing like all the birds, I started to notice all the bugs. I mean, every, every type of thing you can think of, from every bug to every bird to every whatever, comes and sits literally on my balcony, you know? And it's interesting because they're just drawn to the energy of copper. And, and when I started to notice that, I started putting out these videos. And then I started, people started implementing it and making the copper spirals and copper vortexes and putting them in their dirt and a whole bunch of them. And now I've been bombarded probably with like hundreds and hundreds of messages of where their plants are absolutely ginormous. And like I'm doing it in a pot and it worked. So if you did it in the earth, it's a whole different. I mean, the one lady, she showed me her pumpkins, the vines are like eight feet wide, left to right, and now they're eight feet tall. And she goes, I've never seen my pumpkins ever this large, you know, like the vines. The other lady had cabbage and she yielded cabbage already three times this summer. You know, so that was a huge thing too. She's getting three times the food in just ninety days. And then there were other people with tomatoes, with some apples. There was like a pear tree that was pretty much completely dead, it only had like two leaves on it. All of the leaves pretty much regenerated and now the plant is actually starting to yield pears. So it's fascinating to watch how in such a short amount of time, just putting out some information about Justin Christo Flow and electroculture and copper and all these different things, how fast things can change and how fast we can, we can, not to say manipulate, but alter what the environment that's already existing around us and harness all that.
Yes, I'd like to say harmonize.
I think that work is just a simple one. But yes, we can harmonize the frequencies around us so that things can be balanced out. You know, especially with all the stuff they put into the air, you know, and they're trying to alter the frequency with that and dim our spirits and our consciousness with all of the sprays and all of the stuff that goes up in there. They know what they're doing, they've been beaming frequencies off of that to then change our break beta, theta, delta gamma waves and everything else. So with this, I noticed your plants will, will basically be like, in my opinion, unstoppable. And they will just keep growing and they don't need as much water. Like I only have to water my plants maybe once every three or four days. And I'm in a hundred and twenty degrees or a hundred and ten degrees, today it's one, it's one oh nine. You know, you don't need as much water either anymore. So that is a huge factor because we've been told you got to water your plants and these droughts and all this other stuff. But it's like, you're not focusing on the energy of the soil. And if you focus on the energy of the soil, the bacteria and the worms will all start coming back. And then that soil will be much more powerful, more magnetic and stronger and everything else.
Exactly, you know, we have to, we have to acknowledge that the earth is deadly alive. It's way more the aspect of quote unquote nutrients. You know, there is another, you can pour as much nutrients you want into the soil, but the life force itself, if you're not honoring that, that's another factor in itself. So this whole, this whole thing on, on say the soil, what about say the energy in the soil? That's the main point we should be looking at. Because things like electroculture and utilizing scaler as well, is showing us we need less water. That, that also helps the environment big time in general. And, and also help promote more in general as well. And also keeping the earth as free flowing as much as possible. If we look at our ancient ancestors, not just in Egypt, but all over the world. You know, now that we see that pyramids help with plants, it kind of makes sense of why they put pyramids, where they put them to help with agriculture as well. When I went to Egypt, it made sense when I went up the Nile and everything was this luscious green. You could just feel it. And even people that are not, you know, into the awareness, you can just hear them say on, on the, on the crew, like, hey, everything is vibrant, because I'm just hearing like, wow, even people are noticing what I'm noticing. So it just shows that even shapes a pyramid, even if you don't believe in electricity with the pyramids etcetera, even the shapes alone help the electromagnetic field in terms of scaler, give resonance and structure the water and then help the irrigation into the agriculture and to just overall healing. Of course, you didn't just use the water just for agriculture, but they use it for healing, sound balance as well, etcetera.
Well, and the thing too, with what you're saying too, is that, that resonance of that soil. You know, when you look up like Philip Callahan's work and all of his on magnetism and paramagnetism and stacking things together, you know, he basically explained like the soil is losing its magnetic ability or its magnetism over time, which is losing its energy. So it starts to crack and fall apart and pretty much die, you know? And it, or like not die, but just, you know, just fall apart. And I feel like even with over there in Egypt, you know, with all of the stuff that they were doing to build the pyramids at that time, you know, they were using certain types of material with either magnetite and different types of granite and different types of basalt and volcanic clays and all of these things, they were putting together with alchemy, in my opinion. But with alchemy, putting all of those things together to make this block that they, you know, stacked or however they did it with levitation or whatever it may be. But when they stack these blocks together, they are synergistically working to create energy around it all the time and energy inside of it. So when you chant inside the pyramid or if you meditate inside the pyramid, you're basically in one big Orgone box that's basically just harnessing the earth right at that spot. And plus you have water underneath, which is also interesting because when you look at what they're trying to do with all these cell phone towers and putting towers all over the place and you're looking at all that, they're putting them on ley lines. Why are they putting them on ley lines? Because they're acting just like a pyramid to emit those frequencies all different directions. And then also put that, that, that frequency into the water so that that frequency is coming into your home. And then you have the water, which has now been restructured or damaged. And then it will also then damage your plants or yourself or your skin or whatever it may be. Because whatever it comes in contact with, it's now a damaged structure. So it's interesting because even I did that video, I'm sure you saw it, the one with the water and how we're never running out. It's like those dams that they're putting all over the United States. And now they're starting to put a lot into Africa as well too. They're trying to control the water and everything that's in there, you know? So why? Because there's so much energy and so much knowledge and so much frequency that comes from water. And it's been, it's been suppressed of us learning about the knowledge and energy that comes with water. When you have a running river, you can harness free energy from that spot. And Victor Schauberger learned that. He learned that trout can basically jump and levitate through water because they understood the hot and cold, hot and cold waves that were basically going or like the frequency that was basically going. And they would be able to jump in there and then they would hit it at a certain point by basically producing oxygen at the exact same time. And those trout would be able to levitate up the river, you know? And people were telling us in science, with the science, that it was, the trouts can jump. But in reality, the, the, the trouts can actually levitate. And he would learn that because of how he understood how they would go through these rivers and these things. So they've put up these dams to block a lot of the way the water naturally flows and alter that current or that energy that's always coming. And if you connect, for example, copper into a river or into that area, it will then send that frequency straight up, just like those chembusters of the things that, the cloudbusters that Wilhelm Reich was creating. He understood when you took copper and you took pipes of different magnitudes and you place them into water, that created the energy that shot frequencies up into the air. And you could use it to either make it rain or help reduce rain or change the atmosphere around as well too. So it's interesting because it all seems, when you look at it, for example, like you said, just a simple pyramid, it looks so simple and so basic, but it's really so powerful and so energetic. But we just don't see it that way because we're taught unfortunately, that a lot of the very simple things usually are not working. But in reality, the most simplest things are the things that fix everything, you know? And even like we were just saying back with the breath, just the breathwork alone of you breathing makes a big difference. You know, that, that, that's a simple thing without even a shape. Now you add all the shapes and the pyramids and everything without, with that as well. And you have a whole new level of heightened either awareness or just where your brain is going consciously in the state of that.
Yeah, we just finished Breath Dojo here. We did, the theme was frequency breathing. So we were tapping into three, three nine six, eight five two, seven eight three. You know, those different types of breathing, we'll do one towards the end because I want to at least do one on every Breathful Podcast. But I like how you also brought up the aspect of oxygen and magnetism. If you, there's a video out there, if you pour different, different states of gases in between magnets, right? You pour them, you'll see them fall right through, fall them right through, fall them right through. But then when you pour oxygen into it, you start to see it structured and harmonized and stay in the middle. So even before I saw that video, I always said that the breath is, that one of the characteristics of breath is magnetism. Because it, you exhale, travels three to five days around the world and comes right back to you. What does that sound like?
And then we've lost the understanding of magnetism. And that's why I think Philip Callahan was great with that. He talked even about like the cathedrals and all the ancient sacred sites like Stonehenge and all these like Celtic round towers, how they basically used a magnetic and non-magnetic material and they put them together so that they would have a certain resonance. So when the monks would go up to the top of these places, they could basically meditate and be able to connect to the cosmos. But there was also all this energy that was being gathered, which would put them in a very heightened state. You know, so that, it was, it was crazy. I mean, and he was big on basalt and volcanic clays and how we can use those to increase the magnetism of our plants. And it's interesting because one of the books I was reading was talking about how they used to grow plants without the sun. Basically using rocks, they would use certain type of rocks which would gather magnetic, magnetic, the sun spectrum. They put those magnetic rocks into the dirt overnight at nighttime. And the plant would start to grow two times more because it was still getting the same frequency. And they started testing with those rocks, connecting a copper wire from the rock to the plant in the dark. And they started to notice that in people's basements, they were growing plants without any sunshine. And these people were kind of blown away because they're like, well, it doesn't make any sense. I'm not hitting any sun onto my plants, you know, it doesn't, how, how on earth is it growing? But it was because those, the frequency coming off the sun was beaming into the rock, connected into the wire. And then that wire was going into the soil, giving the soil the exact same thing as if the sun was hitting the plant. And it's just kind of like, you know, you see all these like vertical gardens and all of these things they're trying to do nowadays with the Monsanto's vertical gardens and whatever else. And you can just see we're, we're disconnecting ourselves from the soil, which is going to have a detrimental impact. Because when we disconnect ourselves from the soil, we're no longer connected to earth. You know, we're growing now, they're trying to grow things in water, which doesn't make any sense because there's, there's no, there's no minerals unless you do alchemy with it. But there's no minerals in there and now you have to re-mineralize the food. So you might be able to grow, you know, ten thousand pounds of spinach or whatever it may be. But if there's no soil, there's no life, there's no magnetism, there's no frequency, there's no energy in it. So, you know, then you're eating almost lifeless foods. And I feel like, you know, that's the thing that's missing. And then I saw something which was funny. They were taking those plants because they were now in fake lights or whatever, just like the whole, with the whole Monsanto marijuana push. They were taking those plants and they put them back outside because the blue lights were stunting the growth. So it's like, it's, there's no long-term ability to grow things this way. If you're going to use blue lights and then you have to put it out in the sunshine and just do it the original way. You might as well put it back in the dirt too and just leave it, leave it the way it is, you know? So they always try to substitute one thing for another when it's like not, just let's just use the real thing. And then we don't have to worry about, you know, supplementing or doing something. Let's just do it the right way and then we don't have to worry about that.
Exactly, the natural way, the natural way of doing things. And not just that, just also honoring and harmonizing with the earth itself. And that's why I love to, you know, farms, just like we were talking about. People who are growing things vertically away from the soil, at least if you get them to use scaler at least. And now whether they realize it or not, you're connecting with the earth, the earth's frequency and magnetic pull in a wireless way in that sense. Whether they realize it or not, I type in sun frequency and it's harm, it's following the algorithm within the air, within the atmosphere, but in the aspect of the magnetic force of whatever the sun's frequency is at that point in time to help sprout or help replenish.
Yeah, and these things can make such a drastic difference. You know, there was a great book, I don't remember the name of it, but there was a lady who basically used music, you know, to make her plants grow faster. And she noticed when she would play orchestra or beautiful music, basically those plants would grow towards the music. She started to notice that instead of the plants going towards the sun, they actually started going the other direction towards the music and didn't want to go towards the sun. So that kind of was mind blowing, I forget, I forget what her name was. But she wrote this book and I actually tried to find it, but you can't. It's like, a lot of the stuff I notice is like gone. It's in somebody's library or something, but a lot of the stuff is actually just gone. Because even no matter how far, which say.
Or blacklisted.
Or yeah, and it gets burnt and they just burn them all. And then you just don't see it. But this lady basically, she understood music and there's a specific, it's like an Indian instrument and it plays a certain frequency and that was the best actually, she said. But next was orchestra and like classical music. But she noticed too, when she would play like rock metal or any type of like heavy music, that the plants were literally like cower and get away because they didn't want to be next to the music. And she knows plants died within like two weeks. So, you know, you really think like, you know, these frequencies that were all around us too as well. That's why back in the day when they sprayed DDT and they were killing off all the birds in the nineteen fifty's, those birds chirping were basically creating frequencies which would make the plants grow faster. So that's why we also have like stagnation and farming because of the fact that we don't have as many birds to make all the chirping sounds. So I saw this one guy who created an invention, which was like a boombox that would play bird, bird chirping all the time. He'd spray it with some like wine, he'd take some wine and put spray wine on it and take a boombox and put it next to it. And he noticed that the plants would just go crazy. And it was just because they were mimicking the birds' frequencies, which were just causing the plants, they have like these little things on them, they're like, I forget what they're called, they're like little pods. And those pods started opening up. And basically because the pods were opening up so much that the plants were absorbing more nutrients, he said two hundred to three hundred times more nutrients just by playing the bird sounds. And they would start to just open up. So I've noticed too, if I put flaxseed on my balcony or flaxseed in the area, all the birds will come. And then they'll all start chirping and then the plants will be complimented because. And then they'll all start chirping and then the plants will be complimented because they're, they're happy to be here and then they play and whatever else. But it's interesting because even with hummingbirds too, they have a specific chirp, you know, that you know when you hear it. And they also make sounds. So you look at this frequency thing and go, hmm. You know, there's probably a reason we're supposed to have all of these things around. And then if we go to like the moth or the butterfly, the wing is, you know, there's framing off of that as well too, while it's flying. So the, those are supposed.
Thing, even if it's subtle.
And those things are supposed to help the plant and then they also help pollinate, but they're also helping that plant open up to absorb more. And as we eliminate a lot of that and use all this nonsense, five G garbage and whatever else or, you know, fastest internet ever, I should say. But, you know, the uh, as we use all that nonsense, then we start to impact everything that's around us and these animals and birds and bees and all of those things. So we need to help protect them. And that's where I feel copper, magnetism and all of these things come into a play. Because then we can start to harmonize, like you were saying, harmonize the energy around us and the soil and the plants and then they'll all come back. Because I noticed like I have more bugs, more birds, more than everybody. And it's just because they're attracted to the copper little antennas, you know, in different quartz crystals I put. Because quartz also resonates at that same frequency as well to produce that piezoelectric effect, which also energizes your soil. And it's kind of like making a battery, you know, that's, that's the best way to say it. It's like charging that battery that's been dying and now you're just recharging it. So that's, that's, that's kind of what I've seen.
Yeah, that's the number one thing I've been getting from farms who've been sending in their pictures of, of their farm, their soil. And by the way, for your viewers, we're accepting pictures of farms for free and placing them on the scaler so it'll create the same magnetism no matter where that farm is. And we, we run things like EMF detox, Chemtrail detox, that's, that's a big one. I think the Chemtrail detox is when we really started to see everything really went uh wild. Because uh even in, in the water of the soil, of course, that recycles in the air in terms of Chemtrail, so that's a really big thing. But we noticed many birds, testimonials of birds coming, coming a lot, a lot more animals are drawn to the farm. People really feel different, but mainly the, the animal aspect is, I'm like, oh, more birds are coming to your space and now it makes sense. I didn't even think about the birds aspect of the, the frequency affecting the soil. That's a huge thing. And it reminds me every time we would do a sound healing event outside, we would also hear the birds reacting to it, going back and forth. So that's also a great sign. When I first turned on the scale in a remote place, in a remote area, tons of birds came in. I have this video way down on my timeline, you guys can go check it out. But tons of birds are swarmed in and I didn't even know at the time that um the, the birds were in harmony, in harmony with the aspect of the, the scaler resonance in that, in that way. So birds, if you look at them, same thing with fish, you know, it's quote unquote school of fish. Why are they moving all in unison? Why are they moving in that way? And I posted, I did a live the other day and I showed everyone a swarm. I think it's called the, the Mont, the Montoon effect, where you see a swarm of birds, but you can actually see them rotate in that spiral and it's a very rare occurrence to, to find that. So I posted the video and we were just watching and watching. I'm like, oh, that's the first time I noticed and like, they're actually moving in a spiral motion like really million, I don't want to say millions, but definitely at least, at least a thousands of them, birds are swarming in the air and they're not moving at random. No, they're moving, they're moving in specific patterns.
Say, when you look at birds, they're moving, they're moving in sync perfectly and they're not looking at each other, right? Because they can only see out the right side and left side of their head at the same time, which makes it difficult to actually look around because you're, it's like you're seeing out your ears. But it's interesting that you say that because I saw a video the other day where they showed when the bird's wings are out like this and they're just flying like a hawk, basically just hovering as well around in the area. There's vortexes being created by their wings. And then on the back two uh bird, bird feathers at the exact same time, their tail, they can do an additional two vortexes back there as well to pivot and make their movements. And they were saying how we could, it was funny because the video was saying how we could use this technology to create planes. And it's like, I'm sure we have it, you know, I'm sure it's, but you know, let's just pretend that, you know, it hasn't. But this whole, it was a two-minute video and it basically just showed the different vortexes which are being created because of the, basically through the feather, the antenna, they're like, like antennas of each, each wing and each feather. And those antennas are vibrating at a certain frequency, which are basically creating a vortex the entire time while they're flying and.
I, I bet you, I bet you a million dollars or even more than that, if we were to go that route when they, eventually, hopefully, they start building planes like that, just based on that specific blueprint that you said.
Oh, yeah.
Compared to the planes of today, that definitely, that one would have less EMF radiation.
Yes, yes. And that's the thing is like, when you look at all this technology and all, and you go back into all this with like the, the ether and the orgone and all the, the frequency and like everything that they used to do. You know, their stuff was so simple because they understood like the biodynamics or the biomechanics of the earth and to understand the frequency. They understood clay, they understood water, they understood the stars, you know, certain alignments. Like we got the full moon coming up, it's very strong, you can feel it, it's in like seven days or whatever, seven to eight days. You know, you can start to pick up on those things. You can do certain things during the full moon that you can't do during other times, just like during the new moon. You know, so all these things all have a play and if we started to really, like you said, utilize that and tap into that technology. I mean, we could be living on a whole different plane and using different types of technology which could just fly around. Like those birds are not using any energy, they're just floating, you know, they're just floating around. They understand and it's interesting because when I used to do a lot of chanting and when you wear, I was gonna say like copper as well, too. Birds will pick up on that, they see it. And I noticed that with hawks, hawks will spiral above you. Um, and they'll start to create a vortex. And if you chant up directly towards a bird as well, too, the bird will start to spin and create a vortex above you and they will stay with you the entire time because the energy and frequency coming up from your aura or whichever word you'd like to use, going up towards them, they're picking up on that. And then they use that to then detect which way to go. And it was interesting because I was reading this book one time where they were talking about how birds will create a vortex so that they can pick up on the earth's magnetism to know exactly the direction in which they want to go. So you'll just see them, they'll just spin and you're thinking they're like maybe looking at like a prey or something or whatever it is. But they're picking up on the earth's frequency and, and it basically channeling it in. And I noticed with that, if you spin in a circle, which we used to do as a kid, I know, I'm sure you remember, you put your head on like a baseball bat and you spin in a circle and whatever goofy things. There you go. So.
I do, I do it every day.
If we do that as well, too, and you spin in a circle and you either hold anything or you chant at the exact same time, you can then start to see the way the earth is just kind of moving kind of like that, but you can then do the exact same thing. But we just don't do it because it makes us dizzy versus the birds, you know, they have the magnetites and a lot more of it in their brain. They can pick up on the frequency versus us, we get a lot dizzier with that if you haven't done that. And that's the same stuff they train.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, yeah, it's a practice and um if you look at on, if you, if um, what they call it, they call it left spin blood. If somebody has left spin blood, they have different uh blood issues, et cetera. If you have more right spin blood, you're in the normal balance in that sense. But when I work, when I work with clients who have any like blood issues, you know, that's one of the spinning practices. Because uh high-level athletes, they still do this today. And it's an interesting procedure. Kobe, Kobe, Kobe Bryant did it a lot where he would get injured, go to this specialist, would take his blood, put it in a blood spinner, spinner and take out the blood. And you can see comparison how the blood is thicker, richer, and what they do is they stick it right back into that same spot. And the athlete will heal ten times faster than the average human, in my opinion.
I could see that because that's the thing is what the, the cell phone towers are doing, right? They're making the oxygen spin the opposite direction, which makes it harder for you to absorb and breathe. So that would make sense too with your blood, you know, based on if you're building up a, a, a negative frequency or the frequency going back the opposite direction, you would be then more prone to injuries. Kind of like the whole negative ion versus positive ion thing, you know, similar to that. It's like if you just then can correct and spin the opposite to right way. And I noticed when I would spin and do the different ways, certain ways would be much easier. You know, to the right would be maybe say easier, but then to the left would be a lot harder. And I would, each one would do a different thing, but the focus that would happen was pretty wild. I mean, the, the, the amount of focus that would happen from that spinning. And it's interesting because what I started noticing was, was I started taking sticks and I would take them and I'd put them into the earth. And I would go and I would spin it, right? Like I would actually stick it into the earth and I would spin that and make a vortex into that. And I noticed whenever I'd make a, a little vortex hole with a stick, I thought, hmm, this is maybe how they used to drill back in the day, right? You always look at those horse things where they have like the horse that goes in a circle. And you wonder why on earth are you making your horse go in a circle? It doesn't make any sense, horse is gonna get dizzy. But because it's creating, it's creating a vortex. And I noticed that those like pockets, they almost look like, like, like when a little prairie dog goes and builds in there. But I noticed that those pockets, the insects would also then go land in there and they'd sit in there, like the beetles, especially beetles. Because beetles are really detecting the frequencies, but they would sit in there all the time. And I, and I would notice when I would put my hands over those specific like holes, which were like potholes or whatever, I could feel the actual frequency coming up into my hand. I could feel the energy in there. Now, when I would go in other areas where those holes were not in and I put my hand, I couldn't feel a single thing. So I noticed the more you would create these, these vortexes and, and spin into the earth, it's almost like you're putting your energy into the earth and then it stays there. And I think that's like Kirlian photography, which I think is really, really cool. Um, they showed a lot with that. They showed when people would hold an object and they would squeeze it, their energy and aura would resonate in that object. So I feel like that.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a practice we do with the, the scaler necklace, scaler necklace. Because when you're squeezing, you know, the, along with the piezoelectric effect, but when you're squeezing the crystal, you're also creating the scaler effect too. Because what scaler really is, it's more than a wave, it's more of like an impulse, keyword pulse. Anything that has a pulse, it, it has somewhat of a scaler, it has a scaler resonance in it. That is what the scaler is arriving. Um, going through, if you want to call it dark matter, going through different dimensions.
You got it.
Pulsating, 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 pulsating. Because when the Hertzian wave, the Hertzian wave collapse, what happens? Collapse, keyword collapse, pulsates. So, yeah, that's what's happening when you're, when you squeeze a crystal and your pulse starts to harmonize with the crystal and it creates a beautiful.
And that's why I like though, like I was telling you about the Kirlian photography, I was reading a book on that and how they were taking pictures of objects. And they were noticing how the, the, the auras would change depending on the, the object and if it had energy on it. Or if a person was basically possessing like psychic abilities or different things like reaching into Akashic Records or like a psychic healer. They noticed that their hands would have like an orange glow. And it, that when they started doing their healing, that orange glow would basically amplify. And they would see it all over their hands at the exact same time. And then they noticed when they were healing those people using that, you know, that psychic healing and connecting their aura into the other person. They noticed that that person, whoever they touched right on that same spot, their aura was then orange and they had the exact same thing. Like, just like slapping somebody and putting a handprint on them, you know, I, I, bad example, but you know what I mean? But it's basically just like that and putting a handprint, but it's kind of like the exact same thing. And they noticed that that orange glow was on them as well, too. And they noticed people who were basically suffering from a debilitating disease, that their aura was pretty much gone. You know, they would do these Kirlian photography images with these people and they noticed that the people who were on their kind of like last limb, their aura was pretty much gone, like their hand would be just once, one couple dots or a couple spectrums. If they were not so healthy, it would be kind of like a little bit of blue, but they noticed that the person when they were at their, basically at the end of their lifetime, if they were gonna go through that, their aura had pretty much disintegrated. And it was fascinating too because they did some Kirlian photography with food. And they noticed when they had raw food, like a raw tomato and they untouched it, basically the aura was huge. And then when they cooked it, the aura pretty much completely decimated, which ruined the life force, you know. So if anybody eats a well-done, you know, meal, that's probably not the best idea anymore with that situation because of the fact that you're just removing all the life force from that food and.
Yeah.
Well done.
Keyword well done.
It's overly, 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 overly done, you know, like it's, it's pretty much not there anymore. So, you know, and that's why it tastes that way. So, you know, it's, it's funny, but it's interesting because, yeah, the whole Kirlian photography goes with that too as well. Because they started noticing that, it was really cool, the other one I remember is with plants, right? They would do Kirlian photography of a plant and they would notice that the plant is about to have like an illness or start to break down or not be as healthy because of the aura started shrinking. And then as the aura started shrinking, the insects would start coming because the insects come to clean it all up because that's their job. But they noticed that all these plants, just before they were about to get to this certain point, that they're in their Kirlian photography images, those plants started losing their aura. And this guy who created it, the husband and wife, was like, we should be using this technology to see with either people or with animals or plants where their aura is, even if it's not a hundred percent accurate every single time. It's just a good tool that we can use to just see where, you know, where the plant's life is. Because if we can see that now and put that over our eyes that only have a certain spectrum, well, now we can start to detect, oh, our, my plants may be suffering and I need to X, Y, Z, or I need to use a frequency or I need to do some sound baths or I need to do some of this stuff with it so that I can revitalize it and get it back. I don't need to just keep pouring water on it and hoping that it just comes back to life, you know, because I poured more water on it, you know, it's not, that's not gonna do, this isn't doing anything. It's or, or like you said, try to re-mineralize, but it's not, there's no life force there, so it can't absorb the minerals. And that's the same thing with supplements and food. If your body can't process anything, if you're not taking care of it, it's not gonna be able to absorb it either, you know. So, and that goes back to the breath work as well, too. If you can't breathe, can't absorb anything either, too.
Hey, you could, you could have the best diet in the world, but if your breathing is shallow, it's only, it can only help so much. That's why people hit a brick wall. They said, hey, I'm having, I'm trying this, I'm trying that, but I don't know, why am I not losing weight? Why am I, why do I still have this? Why am I still dealing with this? And I had uh two beautiful souls hop on here and they shared their, their weight loss journey. And they said it was until I actually started working with the breath work, that's when I really to, I feel more hydrated than actually drinking anything.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh, yeah, than before.
Yeah, and that's where, I was gonna say that's where. Going all that oxygen in, right? You're gonna now, you're gonna utilize everything in which you're consuming. You know, if you don't have a lot of.
And it's, and it's, and it's structured, it's also, you're structuring, you're structuring water because we live in an atmosphere of water, it's not just thin air, right? So you're learning how to structure water in, in your, in your body's most basic foundational starting point. You know, and that, and that foundation sends ripples into the other layers, either trauma and down to the muscle. And the muscle, of course, holds that trauma within there. So the breath is the easiest, one of the easiest ways to communicate and sends, send ripples into deep suppress the trauma that someone may be dealing with.
Well, and also too, if you think about babies, right? Babies are breathing in water, right? Like they're in the womb. They're breathing water, they're breathing in, just there's oxygen coming in all the time. I mean, they're literally submerged, you know? And then they come out and they're in this world and like what's going on and then traumatized and all kinds of other things. And then their oxygen, they're not breathing and then they're scared, you know, and then that's, that, 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 that trauma sticks with them for life, right? Like if they're born into a hospital that's doing it the opposite way, it's going to mess them up as well, too. So that breathing really plays a role in keeping yourself healthy as well because you can release, like you said, that emotional trauma that's pented up as well, too.
Yeah, it's, it's a powerful communicator and that's, that's one of the reasons why I came up with subliminal breathwork music. So I had a friend.
I was gonna say, your, your music is out, outdoing your voice, I can't, I can't, yeah, there you go.
Oh, I'm trying to be quiet because she's recording. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna talk up a little bit more now, but it's beautiful music right now, in fact, yeah. Yeah, so to tap in, tap back in, my friend, my friend's uncle was on the respirator and he couldn't really breathe. So I was like, you know what, all this, all this talk about mirror neurons and learning about them at that time. I'm like, it would make sense if I'm breathing, if I record myself doing the deep, deep breath work and really going deep. Maybe even, even though he's on the respirator, maybe it might help. So I, that's when I started the recording journey and we played it for him for over thirty-plus days. And then he finally got off the respirator and he could do the exact same breathing pattern that he was listening to all this time. So it, and guys, if you don't know the aspect of mirror neurons, think of it like this, when you're watching a scary movie, I don't really watch scary movies. But we're, think about a, a time when you're watching a scary movie, someone's running away from somebody. Imagine your heart starts beating, right? There's a reason why your heart starts beating because your body doesn't know the difference. Your body's seeing another body and the body understands the foundational aspect of a body. So it's just gonna pick up the information and then it's gonna start resonating on you and that's what you'll do the way you do.
And that's why I like, even with that, that's why they want you to see those movies, right? That's why they want you to listen to that type of music. That's why they want you to take that in. Because then you're absorbing that frequency through your subconscious mind that you don't realize is actually being activated in a different way. And then it puts you in this fear state, which then if you're now in that state in real life, you're freaking out ten times more because you're like, oh my God, I saw it in this movie, you know, and I know that person's coming after me now and whatever. So you start freaking out. And then when you start freaking out, now you're, you're right back in that. And then when you start freaking out, now you're, you're right back in that fight or flight, like where your heart's just beating through the roof. Because you've been programmed subconsciously through that, that television program. And it's starting to entune you to that same exact scenario. And then you're replaying that same scene in your head, even though it's not gonna actually happen. But we're replaying it because you've been programmed with that in your mind, you know? And that's why it's good to, like you said, stay away from all of that, you know, scary movies, you know, four, four forty hertz music, like the whole entire thing. Because it's just changing your subconscious and working against you and purposely trying to get in there and alter maybe your barrier that you're trying to put up to say, I don't need this stuff in me and I don't need this negativity. And, you know, I don't need any of that. Like we need positivity and changes and solutions and things to go forward. Otherwise we will keep doing the same exact thing over and over and over and over again.
Yeah, so three days after we put Florida on the scaler. Uh, they came out with a law saying that if you play over loud music in the car, uh, you, you'll get fined. So I'm like, huh, I, I think, um, if you think about it, you know, when some, if you're sitting down and you're being to yourself or you're just walking and it's you're being to yourself, person just drives down with loud music, it puts you into a shock, a shock state, right? So I'm like, hmm, maybe the scaler is helping in some way with the laws, I guess. But it'll, it'll, it'll create less dissonance, because we are all walking, um, we're all walking in tenants, if you will. So that, that spreads out in, in many different ways. So the less dissonance with people in that regard.
Definitely. And also too, I used to have subs in my car back when it was cool. You remember when everything was like Lil, Lil Jon, Mike Jones, the whole entire everything? You know, everybody used to.
Yeah, my dad.
But I used to have subs in my car. And imagine now if you use, for example, the frequency you have, right, in those subs. It would be such a different world, rather than playing Lil Jon and Mike Jones and everything else they used to play at that time. But, you know, it's just such a different thing. And I used to love it. Like I used to play it so loud that you can hear me miles away. But I felt like it was like this vibrational massage. That's why I loved it so much, because it was the frequency. And as soon as somebody got in my car, I would turn it up real loud. Cause I'm like, this is what you're gonna have to go through, but I'm gonna turn it up real loud. And then the frequency of like highs and lows, you can feel it rippling in your body. You know, and I used to love it, but I never understood what I was really even listening to at that time, you know? And, but it was fascinating, because now when I look forward, if we did that on a large scale and you took those subs and actually used them for that. It would be such a whole different situation of like a frequency.
Yeah, that's, so that's, that, so that, yeah, so that's another aspect of scaler that I'm making like a separate scaler for artists that wants to put their music inside the scaler. And you can, so the scaler plate, the scaler plate itself, you'll notice that it's not a speaker. It's coated with gold and, and coated with other composite material. So when you're, you, you can actually hear the music come from the scaler plate. So that should show you that you're actually, you're actually hearing the electrical embodiment of the music that's coming out. And artists, I only did it with about four artists already. And they say the feeling, when they play, when they play their music again on YouTube, they really do feel the difference. But the number one thing I'm getting from them, it feels warm. It's like, it's like playing those, um, with those, uh, those car, those carbon, what's it called? Those carbon tracks?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Like, and it's like vinyls or whatever, vinyl, uh, yeah, vinyl records.
Yeah, vinyl, yeah, vinyls, vinyls, yeah. Yeah, vinyl records. And it hit me, it hit me. I'm like, if you really think about it, what is vinyl made out of? Carbon. So maybe that's why you feel a different resonance and more chill, especially if it's harmonious music being played from the vinyl. Because we're also made up of carbon as well, in many degrees. That's where our mirror, our mirror, yeah, that's where our mirror neurons start to pick up on the vinyl. And that's why it gives you that warm feeling. So it's interesting hearing that feedback when you're playing the music into the scaler as well. So that's another way, um, I'm trying to, not trying, but I'm aiming to expand on different ways to utilize scaler. And all walks of life, I feel like that'll help aim us towards a, a better reality in terms of our experience of this universe.
Really important, because if we don't do that, then like I said, it's just a perpetual cycle of the same stuff. And that's why we keep repeating, because a lot of it is suppressed or we're not moving forward or trying or testing out something. Even if it doesn't even work, just testing out something new to see if it works and then to see what happens, you know? And that's a big thing too, because the issue that allies is that if we keep just doing the same stuff over and over, we're gonna keep getting the same result. So we need to start using this technology, which has been around for a very long time. You know, even with the scaler waves as well and pyramids and all of that, it's been around for a very long time since the dawn of time, you know? So we need to start using that. And then as we start using that, we can start making little changes and testing different things. And I feel like with the electroculture, that's kind of what I'm seeing now on social media, like especially on TikTok. It's went crazy. It got like a billion views or whatever it was, but it just blew up. And people started trying it and their plants are going nuts. And that's what we need, because then they can, then people can also then try. Hmm, well, maybe if I take brass instead of copper, because I got the zinc and the copper connection, maybe that will be better. And that will be better, because that creates the perfect battery. But it's just interesting, because then we can do different experiments. Because we can't just have one, like even with you just doing scaler, there can't just be one person doing it. There needs to be multiple people doing it at the same time, because then we all can have different experiments, but we can also all compare our results. And if you look at like.
Did, did, did you see the experiment we did with the scaler sticker? With the mango? Yeah, so we did one with the mango and you could clearly see how without the scaler sticker, the mango got super, super dark. And it was still fresh compared. And you would think, because it's a sticker, because a sticker would, you know,
You would think, yeah.
Cause it to rot a lot faster. It's, it's a sticker. Yeah, you would think that. So just seeing that with my own two eyes, I told everyone who gets a sticker, like if you can do a, in the same experiment, however you want to do it. We'd give you like a free scaler sticker again. So I just wanna let everyone know that.
Interesting, because they used to do that with pyramids too. They would put the fruit in the pyramids and the pyramids and the fruit would never rot, you know? So that's interesting that, so that's almost basically mimicking the same thing or the same frequency, right? Like you're embedding that sticker with the frequency and then you're putting that sticker on the fruit.
Yeah, so, so that's, that, that same emblem, we shipped scalers all around the world and people are playing. People only have access to harmonious frequencies, obviously. And just imagine, uh, over like a hundred plus people are playing different harmonious frequencies through that one. Uh, that's, that one emblem, but that one emblem, the base is actually biogeometry, a biogeometric base. And then we, then we added other layers into it to make it even more powerful, including the spiral as well. You can't even really tell the spiral is in there, which is wild. And, but, but it's in there. And, and just imagine, we're literally creating our own network, just like they have the satellite network, just like they have the five G tower network. I like to say whatever they can do, we all can do. So always use that as a mantra, people. To empower yourself and never feed into something that is destructive. Cause that's another, that's another thing, that's another thing I really like about you and we're on the same wavelength. Like, show me, show me the, show me the, the outcome that helps instead of degrades. Show me the solutions, focus, solution, solution.
There is so easy, there's solutions all the time. And it's not, we can just do this. Like we don't have to sit like and just be in this state. You know, and that's what they want us. And they want us in a drama state, bickering and fighting over dumb things and being divided and everything else. And it's like, that's not gonna move us forward at all. We're just gonna sit and argue with each other over the dumbest things. And then six months later, we'd be like, oh man, that guy kind of was my friend. Now I should be friends with him again. And then it, it just, it doesn't, it's, it's stupid. It's such a silly way of thinking. But yeah, the solutions, there's so many. And each little thing, like even just turning off the wifi in your home, just doing little things like barefoot grounding, breathing, switching to organic foods, distilled water, you know, I, I could list a whole bunch, superfoods, chilishop, blah, blah, blah. But there's all different things that can be done and they're so simple. And as you just change one little thing, your life gets easier and easier. You know, just being aware of what, what type of clothing you're wearing and the, and the frequency that's coming off the clothing. You know, thou shall not mix linen with wool for the reason that it depletes the frequency and, you know, diminishes it as well. So it's like, when we start understanding all these things, we can start making these little changes. And then whatever they do around us, because they always want to do some stupid stuff and whatever they're always trying to do. It is what it is, because I'm actually not going to either consent to it or I'm not gonna allow that to ruin my life. And I'm gonna continue to keep moving forward and helping other people, like you were just saying, to also move forward. Because that's what we need to do collectively. Whatever they decide to do on their Operation Mockingbird, MK Ultra programs and everything else. Feel, feel, feel free to do that, but I'll be doing this over here and I'll be trying to, you know, elevate other people at the same, at the same way.
Beautiful brother, definitely on that same wavelengths for sure. And, you know, out of, out of just, it only takes one percent and we are the one percent. A lot of people like to talk about the one percent and a negative connotation, but at the same time, that one percent, that smaller group of people, which is also us.
And, and little things, you know, just even doing a live and I'm happy we got to do it and talk about a whole bunch of stuff. But even just doing that and just connecting, you know, and giving and just opening and connecting in different frequencies and opening different channels and just putting things out there. Because one thing you learn, I might learn from you and then you will learn from me and then that will teach somebody else. And then it's pretty much unstoppable. And that's why the internet, in my opinion, is much more powerful for getting the truth out. And that's why they have to put so much time and effort trying to suppress either my page or your page or everybody's page at this point. But, you know, they have to spend so much time doing that, because once it comes out and once people know, it's like you're never gonna not know that ever again. You're gonna be like, you know, wow, why, why have I been told this? And now I gotta tell my friends, family and cousins and grandmas and everything else. You know, and it spreads that fast. And we saw that during twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And now we're seeing at a, in, in my opinion, an even faster rate, because people are starting to realize, you know, a lot of these systems, a lot of this history. A lot of this, you know, even Christopher Columbus and everything else, all a bunch of nonsense and people are waking up to see through a lot of it.
Yeah, it's, 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 we're now literally breaking through the veil, as I like to say. And speaking of the veil, it was, it was my, my same mentor. I gave him a scaler and he lives in the remote places of China, right? So he brings the scaler and I taught him how to bring it remotely and turn it on and all that stuff. And when he turns it on, he could hear a, he could hear the pitch of the mountains. I'm like, yeah, he could hear the pitch of the mountains. And it remind, and he did it first before I did it. So it was really cool hearing his story. But when he said that, in my opinion, I feel like we should be hearing that pitch all around the world when we go outside. I feel like that pitch also helped us probably live longer. You know, if you look at, if you look at Sumerian tablets, if you look at all these other ancient scriptures talking about people living thousands or hundreds of years more, there were so many other factors in the aspect of there was no, there was less, there was no radiation in that aspect. And, and anything suppressing the DNA in any way.
Like you said, are definitely impacting us and we should be able to turn on those frequencies. And I noticed too with like doing meditation and chanting, you know, my natural instinct or like awareness has heightened drastically. And it's like, how, now the question is how high did it used to be, right? Like how high did people be able to, were they just like, okay, I don't even gotta talk, I'm just gonna send him, you know, we're just gonna have a conversation. And it's just gonna telepathically go from one mind to another. And they've seen that with auras. You know, when you put two people together, their aura starts to basically gather around each other at the exact same time, so they can basically become telepathic, you know? But.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have my pitches.
Yeah, I was gonna say, with the auras, it's fascinating, because they'll actually merge together and you'll start to see that connect and, and they'll be as one. And with Kirlian photography, they saw when like a couple held, hold, held hands. They would see that one person's aura would be like this and the other person's would be like this, but it would form a perfect circle when they would hold hands. Because it was complimentary, you know, yang and yang and everything else. So it's fascinating, because a lot of that, like you just said, who knows what the level in which they used to be at, at that time. And maybe how we've diminished and lost a lot of that because of a lot of suppression and then also not teaching it. And also trying to keep it disconnected from us and then give us a lot of trauma and say radiation and EMF all at the same time. Instead of giving us, you know, uplifting things to elevate our mind and tap into that higher consciousness, you know? And that's where I, like I said, with copper.
Exactly. E, e, even the little thing, yeah, even the little things as sirens. You know how sirens are definitely not resonating on a beautiful harmonious frequency. And I'm looking, I'm looking at it, I'm like, actually it's crazy, definitely creating dissonance. I heard a siren in the back of me the other, uh, just a while ago, coming back. I'm like, whoa. And then I had to like shift it back into my breath. I'm like, hmm, I'm not, I'm not taking this. So just the aspect of sirens, why are certain things what they are? You know, there's definitely some hidden intentions to, to create that. You know, so it's so important to, to learn these modalities to, you know, on, on the spot, just like you can use, utilize breath or music or, um, tapping into the subconscious with meditation to help you shift back into more resonance instead of dissonance.
I like it all. Great conversation, actually. Great conversation. I'm happy we got to, um, happy we got to hit it and, and be able to do it and talk about it. And actually put it together regardless of the little bit of crazy day and everything else. But a lot of, a lot of great things and a lot of things that I, like I said, I hope, you know, helps other people also dive into and learn about. Because once you get into one little, like I said, like one rabbit hole of Victor Schauberger, George Lakovsky, you know, Nikola Tesla. You know, the Wilhelm Reich, all the different names. But once you start jumping into one, it all starts connecting into a different person. And then you start seeing that all these people have been studying the same thing. And there's so many other people as well too, which we, you know, we can name a whole list. But, you know, there's so many people that are all studying the same thing, but it's just smaller and smaller, smaller circles. But we need to bring that information out so that every person can research it and people can get into it. And that's what I feel like we're doing today.
Yeah, so Odin, so when Nikola Tesla was working on the Tesla Tower and all the way, I think in France, his name was Odin.
Yes, I've seen that.
It's called the Odin Coil. So the Odin Coil, you know, they concluded, you know, years after, because they thought they were battling each other. But in hindsight, it was really the same thing.
Bachmack or Bach, something with a B. I know it's something with a B. Bachmack or something. Odin Bachmack, who created that Odin Coil. And yeah, same exact thing, same person. And then there was somebody else. You had Mesmer as well too. And then you had, I think like Lemire, Lemire was some, one of the other ones. And every person, like you just said, every fifty years, because that was kind of like the timeframe, was all studying the same exact thing the entire time. But they didn't realize, because they weren't communicating, because they were all in their own world, doing their own testing, you know? And then until they.
Yep. But in, but in hindsight, they were, they were all on a, on a magnetic consciousness, if you will, that harmed.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, to, to also add into the Kirlian photography, we did a, we did a, a, a study with, um, or, there's a company called Aura Portal. And he's here in Miami, he's, he's a good friend of mine. So we took his picture and placed it on the scaler. And then he would take a picture of his aura every day. And he says, this is the fastest I've ever seen my aura change. Um, on an everyday basis. You could literally see it went from like orange and then gradually it went, it went to white and purplish towards the end. So it was really interesting, uh, seeing that and utilizing pictures. And I like to think pictures as like a mirror effect. Cause when I was, when I was studying, when I used to live in Cali, when I lost everything, I was also under Nick Edwards at the time. Who was really big into pyramids and he taught me about the aspect of mirrors, why putting mirrors on the corners of pyramids actually amplify, uh, amplify the resonance and mirrors themselves, actually crystals. They're literally crystals. Yeah, a lot of people had superstitions about mirrors. Oh, it might be bad, et cetera, but they're literally crystals. They're, they're crystals and they have different, they have, um, this, they have every spectrum of light that's being emanated in it, right? It's another portal.
Almost like a rainbow, kind of like that too. Same exact thing, but in your house. And then people used to do all those scary stories in front of the rain, in front of the mirrors and be freaked out. Cause like that, you know, remember the horror movies with the mirrors and everything? So it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, you see what they're doing.
It's all, and that's the thing, it's all, everything is the frequency or the vibration. We just have to either pick up on it or be in tune to it. And a lot of the stuff is, like you said, it's disconnecting us from that, because it's putting trauma into us. And then when we're in that emotional state of trauma and fear, we can't connect in that same sense, because we can't calm down to actually just think straight, because we're such in a traumatic state that we're in this fight or flight. And we just wanna either, you know, run away or fight somebody. That's pretty much what's happening. So you can't just center your body down and calm your body down to relax and focus.
Oh, beautiful brother. So speaking of center, I, I think it's great to end the podcast with some frequency breathing, if you will. So we're gonna tap into seven, eight, three, which is the Schumann resonance, Earth's resonance. So it's a, it's a, it's a couple of breaths. You're going at your own pace. So we're gonna have a silent inhale. And then a seventh breath out.
Gotcha.
And you're gonna go consistently, go at your own pace until I say eight. When I say eight, that'll be the cue to switch to an eight part breath out. And then I'm gonna say three after a couple of breaths and then we switch to a three part breath out. And then I'm gonna say silence, where you're breathing in silence, where you can't hear the breath at all. And we're gonna end it there, relax. So a, a great tip I want to give you guys as well is let off little tiny spurts of that exhale. So the, the la, the last, the last exhale will be longer and you won't feel like you're out of breath. All right, we're gonna start, go at your own pace in three, two, one, let's go. Three. Relax, still only breathe with the nose. Breathe in silence. And I ask you in this moment of time, what are you breathing life into? Inhaling what the body needs. Exhaling more life into what the body needs. Thank you all for sharing the breath.
Amazing. Wow.
And it's simple. You can do that type of breath work everywhere you go. You're not gonna pass out, you're not gonna faint. It's a parasympathetic style of breathing.
Nice. It's really, really, really calming, very relaxing. I'm standing on linen too, so that helps with the frequency, but it's, yeah, it's really, really very peaceful, very calming and serene. And then like I said, you almost start to get, like I said, visions, right? Like it's almost like you just, it's kind of like you're going deep into your, into your soul. Into your lungs and into your heart.
Somatics, it literally looks like somatics.
Just like that. Yeah. And then your vision is better. It's amazing, actually. Thank you, brother.
All right, brother. Thank you for hopping on here. Can you give everyone where to find you?
Everybody can find us at cultivateelevate.com and you can find all of our mushrooms, Chilaish, ad, superfoods, all of there as well too. And if you have any questions about anything, about any things I talked about as well, just send me a message. Always open to talk.
Thank you, brother. And this was sponsored by Nature herself, three, six, nine, scaler infused beauty care. Have a breathful day, guys. Peace.